Why do you draw this out?
Four thirty on, on Monday, January twenty second. Open the January twenty second, twenty twenty four, where we plan a commission immediately. We'll call, purchase.
Davidson?
Here.
Maddenmore?
Here.
Batool?
Here.
Priscilla?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
That is six presents, one thing.
Okay. Approval of agenda and, and bits. Whether any changes to the agenda, we're willing to approve the agenda presented.
So move.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, all those in favor say hi.
All right.
Hi. Today. Okay, agenda's approved as presented. So we do not have any meeting minutes to approve. It's not listed.
Chair, it is listed, the agenda was updated, and so if you look at there, you must be aware of your agenda.
Oh, I see, okay, so.
Yeah, we, when we posted it right away, we noticed. Right, that was the first notice for me. Posted, so yeah. Move the minutes for your group.
So is there a second for the January eighth minutes to be approved?
Second.
Jake said. All those in favor of approval say hi.
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 Hi. All those close to name. Okay, agenda, or January eighth minutes are approved. On next on the agenda, students and comments on non-agenda related topics, no action will be taken. Is there anybody out there on Zoom or in the iOS that in public that wants to say something? She done, we'll move on to the next item, which is planning commission and staff reports and comments. Eric, is there anything you want to say?
Share no comments.
Okay.
Or updates.
Good, commission members, anything that you want to say?
Right. I don't know if this is pertinent, but I live on Spring Creek, and so when we come to discuss storm drainage water.
Right.
That influences, I think, my, my take.
Is this for like a disclosure of sorts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll jump.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, we'll go jump right into disclosures and not. Um, they're going for a day communication with different conflict of interest. With Donald, you're in Spring Creek. And I'll have to say the same thing, I'm a, I'm half a block away from Spring Creek, and so I, I too am quite ultra sensitive to what that looks like on a, on a very rainy day.
And if I may have, live on a limit, the ground looks bad. My yard has been flooded three times since we bought the house in ninety eight, so.
Okay, well.
Experience with what it's.
Well, I, I, I think, you know, these are all things that should be brought to the table when we, you know, talk about, uh, with the experiences of those. So current planning projects, so no business, uh, no new business, and I've missed me. Um, long range planning projects, um, include, we have two work sessions, the first one being storm water focus group update and PC discussion. Eric.
Chair, Commission, um, I think really what I would like to do is I, I sent over an email, it was on Friday last week, uh, regarding just the background information from the first meeting. So that you all have them, that was one of the requests that I have Chairman Moody, and so I got that over to you, so. Um, aside from that, uh, from the staff's side of things, I think I'd like to just turn it over to the Chair and allow you to have whatever discussion you feel is necessary so that you can be prepared for the next upcoming meeting. So, thank you, and thank you, so, um.
The, uh, uh, we had, we had a meeting on December fourteenth for the storm water focus group, and, um, I wanted to have a, an informal discussion amongst us as to kind of what we talked about, it was wide ranging topics, and maybe better prepare ourselves for the next meeting on February fifteenth. Um, at this first meeting, uh, Jake and, and Donald and Tom and myself attended, and, um, you know, it was a very, uh, you know, get your feet on the ground kind of, kind of meeting, and got into, you know, things that people had individual concerns about. Um, so what, um, at this, at, at the end of that meeting, we got, got, started talking about what we, what sort of things we can talk about in this next meeting, and there was in the, in the discussion feedback section at the back end of that, um, that presentation, um, handout, is, uh, a, a few bullets, some of which were, one of those was what concerns, issues, challenges do you encounter when it rains? Um, second, what are the expectations of the community for city management of the drainage system? And what are your suggestions about the focus group process that, you know, maybe those, those topics would be further discussed at the second meeting? They were talked about in, in, in very general, quick, quick terms at the end. Um, but I wanted to add, so, so maybe, you know, those things, we can, we can revisit those, those topics. Um, and then, and I wanted to make sure that, that we as a group had, and whoever goes to that meeting, that we have a sense of, of how the storm water, the decisions on the storm water system, how they affect the commission, what, what, what sort of things really are germane to, to this group in the future that, that spiral out of the storm, the storm water, um, discussion. But because we, I, I think in that, in that first meeting, it was, you know, realizing that there was a hundred and thirty five million dollars of pot worth of projects that the consultants had, had put out there for improvements to the storm water system, which is pretty daunting.
Stormwater focus group.
Whoops. Um, and, and, and so, you know, to, to what degree we at the next meeting, you know, talk about tho- those kinds of details and what our expectations are, as opposed to, I think, what the focus is, is how do we fund this thing? You know, how, how do we get as many projects built and, and how that?
Well, I had some questions, I think, what we could do on a planning permission, and what city staff can do, and the council can do, would be a matter of approving some of these, uh, green infrastructure mechanisms as, uh, in conjunction with our, our alternatives to our standard build a hole, dig a hole that lets a lot go in, kind of thing, so, uh, from an engineering point of view, you guys being the experts, are any of these green infrastructure ideas, uh, workable, or is it something we could recommend to staff or council that they would do a lot of certain things under some? Or even maybe do a zoning change on that? Uh, I like the idea of what I call a French drain, and using them everywhere we can, I think we have to come up with a way to do that, so that it would, uh, it would benefit both the storm water situation and the developers, because we can't do anything about the old pipes on this commission. Or we could start planning for new things to come along and provide possibly some of this alternative, cities alternative systems. I don't know what your thoughts were on that, that's my take, Mr.
Yeah, so, I need my take separate back, I mean, I think, so I was looking back through some of our history, so you all know I'm civil and jerk and drainage stuff, or you're in. Just shy of fifteen years here now, so, uh, in twenty thirteen, the city sent out a draft drainage criteria document, and we've never gotten one that's been completely developed. And that was eleven years ago. And so I don't think we recommend anything until we have a drainage criteria in hand that's been approved and adopted by city council. Because that's going to control and, by how are storms or infrastructure, what is the driving capacity of? What capacity is designed for, what incentive to be carried? How, how we're going to manage storm water, like from a rain infrastructure perspective, that should be in there, and all those options of how to manage storm water, how to route it, how? Because we, the, the idea of just playing storm water pipes and, and stuff, I mean, storm type is just a small component of storm infrastructure. We've also got, um, you know, drainage reasons, we've got pipes, we've got in, that's man, that was discussed in there, but we've also got the streets, some of the streets would be main carrier of storm water as well, and just because we have storm drainage in the ground, doesn't mean that it inherently needs to be there. Without having a drainage criteria document to say our storm sewer is going to carry by the, by the, or the king or the, it's not going to be designed for that. That's not practical, but we currently, as the city, has, have no guidance on what needs to be done from a drainage perspective in the design of it, what it's supposed to be handled, or how it's supposed to be handled, where it's supposed to be routed, or any of that stuff. And I don't think it's a wise choice to say, let's go spend a bunch of money and stuff, we don't even know what we, right?
So you think we're not, we're not very well prepared for making real informed decisions?
No, I mean, there's a number of storm drainage master plans out there, there's or there's the north, southwest, and there's the citywide master drainage plan, but that just identifies what is perceived to be problems from a consultant's idea, and this engineer, engineering department probably is recommendations or whatever, but none of that is like, oh, the guy, well, it's just direction from the engineering department, I'm assuming, of what that criteria should have been. Um, but nothing is an overreaching document that says this is what we needed, and I think what we heard on that last one, that that's in the works, right? That that master plan is, is supposed to be in the works and done, but I think we need to have that adopted before we try and spend money on anything that that we perceive as being a problem, needs to be fixed, because it, uh, we're, we're all commended through a minus.
Chris, has U Dub been moved in in any of these discussions?
No, U Dub only, I mean, as far as the university, and I can say this from Perkins, um, they, their perspective is that they don't want to impact offsite, um, stuff as far as storm water and utilities go. Now, that doesn't apply overall, but as far as utilities and storm drainage, they, they try to do at least the conscious effort of of not impacting the storm sewer, now that's not always the case, but.
Because we don't have drainage. Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm concerned with the, I think it's one of my quite long pieces, you know, gallons, it's probably stored in the buildings. But the heat or water? No, of regular city water, that they are planning on draining. Those swimming pools? No.
Well, so here's, here's the, the difference.
I, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm worried about them adding, if it is plant.
Right, but if, if it's potable, oh, you mean from the energy plant?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that would be potable water, I guess.
It's not, it's not.
It's not potable.
I, I would.
Oh, so I'm. So is it, how it would kind of go in this on soup? Or don't have any? I, I don't really know that.
I'm, I'm going to say no, is there are some biosite being used?
Do you know, Derek, do you know if there is any, the most in place for dumping that water? Uh, Chair, or Schneider, there, the city's well aware of the water that's in there, whether, if there's some sort of like maintenance thing going on, I'm not a hundred percent sure of all of those details. But it is hard, I mean, we are aware of the system and like how integrated and diverse the system and all that, I think that's not a stream, so, but there's some, I don't know what's going on.
I, I know there's plans on emptying out the tank, the, the storage, because they had to reline on the inside, it wasn't done properly, they're going to empty it out, reline it, and then fill it back up. My concern is, I think, I, I'm trying to say this as a citizen, not as an employee. I get anybody in trouble, as a citizen, do we have something in place where water's going to go to, where?
I mean, I think it would be incredibly inconvenient if they just decided to dump all of that, you know, if they dumped it from.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, I'm just, well, it's going to take a little while for it to.
Well, and, and, and my, my hope would be that they'd be coordinating out our utilities department, I'm truly, typically that's something that's done, but I, I just don't know the situation, because.
And, and I know it's not storm water, although we should be talking about, but it does impact the drainage system to some degree, and how much it will. Then, I mean, it's, it's, it's stress, I, I, I know it's storm water, but we also have snowfall that does create problems, I've lived on a corner where little massive snow come in, comes in and melts a little bit, and it gets ice, and then more snow melts even more, and it creates problems. You end up with small lake downpour a lot. And so I just, it's maybe not just directly looking at storm water, but including all types of water. And maybe I'm just speaking out of my mind, and it's not any of the concern right now, I'm just.
Well, 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 that, that water, if it goes into the storm water system, then it eventually finds its way in the spring creek, you know, when it, so, and so there's water quality issue as to what? A, a specific kind of discharge from a specific facility that goes in, as if they do at the time there's not a storm, it goes in fairly undiluted into, in the spring creek, and you have, and, you know, and all that quality, and Donald was quite, uh, you know, concerned about actual water quality issues in Spring Creek or, or the Larrabee River. For, um, and so that's not, not a, uh, frugal thing. Donald, you had a?
So, this is just a general comment, so I was attending the meeting just as an observer, just saying. And my impression was, the primary concern of the storm water group is how do we raise money? Uh, which I grant you is important, and in fact, the estimates of a hundred and thirty five million dollars, they come from the master plan of the entire city, it's not coming from these consultants. Uh, and so I had several questions in, which I've written down, and I won't be getting into the weeds, but one of the questions I had was, and I'm going to direct this to Derek. If you look at the city's master plan for stormwater drainage table fourteen, there is a ranking there of high priority items. And they did that, they, basically they did that by storing, by using weighting factors. Uh, so that, uh, cost per property benefited for in a hundred year storm about ten points versus poor quality benefits about a little point. So, my question is, that, that table fifteen, high priority storm water projects, uh, from the CIP prioritization tool, how solid is that? Is that something you guys stand over, or does that need to be reworked? Is that basically going to be accepted as it's?
Chair, Commission, I mean, I would have to go back and open that report, I mean, I don't know, uh, I, I guess, I guess what I would say is, I mean, those, those reports are you know, produced and done by our, our public works division, and I would assume they would still be valid, but I think that that'd be a question we'd need to ask them, that's really outside the realm of what my office is part of, now, we look to those reports for guidance, but you know, when it comes to the priorities, and do those priorities stand the exact same as they are today than when it was written, I, I can't stop. Um, I think what I would, what I would say though is, for the storm water focus group, maybe that's a question to ask, like, how valid are all these things in the different agents, they're even, they've been in different times, so it's, you know, I think, I think it's an important maybe question asked.
Well, and, and this is sort of, you know, the reason to have this meeting, is that get, get, for this people to get a sense of how, how much you go into, you means into, you know, the, the, the North Larrabee Drainage Master Plan, South Larrabee Drainage Plan, West Larrabee Drainage Plan, that they pull those, those projects out of them. And, and, and address some of the comments that Jake had about cost benefit, and, and, uh, you know, really what projects are worth doing, and, and whether this group is, is going to dive into, you know, whole determining what makes sense and what doesn't, which I I, I, I think there's, there's, there's they, they, they talk about like the mission of the storm water focus group, the number one, number two, you know, is, is, you know, talks about these, these, these large, these technical issues about the storm water system and the out inadequacies and the projects that will make it better, but I don't think that they really want to sit and talk about that at these, at these meetings and not talk about, you know, funding.
Right, no, I agree.
And, and, and so, and so I'm trying to get a sense here of, you know, how how disruptive are we as a group, you know, to talk about these, these details of, of whether the detention ponds are properly located or capacity, and and what's a water quality monitoring and all these, these details, and I think we're all kind of, as lots, kind of interested in, so that we feel comfortable with, with those projects and the hundred and fifty five million, and, and diving into the, that you're funding something that really has, has meat on the bones, and is and I, I just don't know, I just don't think that we're, we're going to have those questions answered at these focus groups. Um.
Well, my, my feeling about it is, if we don't know where we're going, then we aren't really a focus group in search of a focus, I mean, all we care about is money. Where are we, we're, where are we going to get the, the money from the gate?
Oh, okay, so, so, so what if you say, you come away from the same, the storm water system is really important to work, and, and it needs to have its own you know, a sewer and, and water, and it, it needs to have its own administration, and it needs to be not just lumping.
Valid, valid infrastructure, and it to be on its own.
Right, and, and that you've got this wish list of twenty four projects that add a hundred and thirty five, now you're not going to do them all, and if you trust that maybe the first three are worth doing, then, you know, let's proceed with, with doing those, and the question is, how, how do we come up with some funding mechanism to just get the ball rolling? It won't, it isn't a comprehensive, uh, funding program, um, but, but, yeah, I, I got a feeling that, you know, like, at the next meeting, they're going to want to jump into into what's the level of service, you know, how much, you know, what, what, what the maintenance and repair of this, of the system is going to be, and what are the expectations for, for, huh? What you're going to get for money spent, and then, and then let's go into how to fund it with drains, and it is, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge topic. And for two, have two or three more meetings, which is what they said, it was, I felt like, oh my goodness, we're, we're, we're just going to be scratching the surface, or really feeling comfortable with how the system is run, how much money needs to be put into it, the projects to fund, and, and how to, how, how to fund it, it's, and, and so I was kind of overwhelmed by the, by the whole thing.
Well, the school program is just unbelievably huge, I mean, I don't think Larrabee's ever had a project lined up that would run a hundred and thirty five million unless we had to rebuild the university. That's, that's a lot, that's a lot of money, even in an inflated economy, but I, my concern is, what can we do as a commission to assist in that, and what we, Chris, let's face the only way, the only valid option they have is to go and raise the water rates. They're going to have to put another line item on the water bill for storm water, and I think you're opening up a political can of worms, and I'm involved in a, a politics, I don't need to go into that one, so.
Well, so, so like, I'm looking at my, at my water bill, or my, my utility bill, um, and if, and if you, you agree that storm water is a critical component of that utility system, and it warrants its a, a, a distinctive line item, you know, you, you look at, 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 at what the, but the sewer, the sewer bill is, is like, you know, twenty, twenty two dollars, the base, the base fee, and then the the trash fee, and, and so I'm just looking at that, I go, if, if it's, if it's going to be on the, on, on the same level hierarchy as sewer and water, then you're kind of.
You're going to be looking at.
Twenty bucks, exactly, you're not, you're not going to say we want sixty, and so it does put some sideboards on, on what could come from a user fee sort of thing, it'd be like fifteen or twenty bucks, I mean, so that, so that, so then, and, and that's just to get things started, it doesn't, doesn't deal with, you know, development fees and tap fees and, and, you know, things that could be part of a development that would come across to us. But it would be, it would be the, you know, one of the, the three or four different ways to, to partially fund the thing.
Yeah.
And so I think it'd be pretty simple that you're just talking about something that's commensurate, or hopefully a little less than sewer, sewer fees, you know, I don't, it's, it's sort of.
Right, you're, you're just, if you equal the sewer fee, you're looking at an increase in the average water bill between fifteen and twenty percent. Is where you're looking at.
Right.
I, I, at least I've looked at my.
A hundred bucks a month, you know, on.
Well, I already pay a hundred bucks a month, and so I already give you another twenty dollars.
That, that twenty percent.
That's twenty percent. Uh, I think it would stifle, it could potentially stifle development of lowering the housing. Chris, uh, if we're talking about apartments and townhomes, well, if we're talking apartments and triple net leases with commercial, that's a significant increase, uh, that would might affect the finished price of rental homes. And that's always a concern, it's, you know, affordable housing, and I think we're like I said, I don't know if it's going to be worth the effort, I don't know if you can sell it to the public unless we got a real solid plan and explain it to the public in great detail. And what exactly we need, what's the minimum we need, and what we're going to do in the long term.
What the big problems are, what, what problems you're going to solve, or?
Yeah, we got to have a plan, you got to go to the public for the, our comprehensive, understandable plan. Uh, that somebody can sink their teeth in and say, these are the rules.
Uh, probably shouldn't say this, okay, but here's, here's my concern about this group, especially if, I think they said they wanted to have maybe another three meetings, do you hear that?
Three, two or three.
Is that focus is entirely on, uh, how will this money be raised? And who will say how much money you raise for what period of time, and who gets to carry the burden? Uh, it's a little bit like, uh, ATB's University of Wyoming, administration at the University of Wyoming decides that X needs to be done. And so they say, okay, we will have a committee study the problem, and then they pick individuals who know they will arrive at the predetermined decision that we're gonna spend. And my concern is, uh, this group is basically focusing almost entirely on how there is money and who gets to carry the burden. Uh, and less on the wider issues of water quality, do we accept plans that are already being drafted? And I guess I'm kind of concerned when I look at the plans, I have kind of a mental image of areas that get flooded in town. I'm thinking particularly some trailer parks that are down close to the Larrabee River, uh, on the north side of town, and yet they don't have much of a presence of plants. I mean, there's a big focus on French Creek, obviously, and there's some focus on Spring Creek. And if what I would find this an easier process to follow, if the folks coordinating, driving the meeting, that the consultants said, we want you to answer the following four questions, whatever those four questions are, rather than, I think we're being asked, what do you think that's going to raise the? Rather than, I think we're being asked, what do you think that's where you raise the money, and we're being told it goes straight on the. Uh, city Larranay monthly bill. So, there. Cause I think that seems to be where this group is going, and so Tom here is gonna get some.
Yeah, it's mine.
I have big shoulders, I think you're. Derek, what, what? Chair, should I just, I think. At least a little bit of what I'm hearing is. Some desire for some more guidance from the focus group and, and what they actually, how they want you to participate. I think that's a real valid, you know, valid request, night, but I will say and try to help. Just planning commission and what you're doing in this work session and not just, you know, talking for four hours about stormwater is that. If you want Tom, what you want Tom to bring to this focus group so that. Questions can be answered, so you can provide. Whatever guidance they've asked you to provide and why you're on that focus group, right? Whether it's just the dollars and cents or is it something else more the validity of the reports or all the other questions, and so I think. You know.
I think that's really important. Or was, did, did, did they get back to you and they say, yeah, it's really on, on funding?
It is, it's, it's. It's, it's, I mean, I, that's what the focus group is, but if you have other questions, I think you need to ask them at those meetings to. Ensure that that's being properly discussed and find out, because if it is just. I'll raise the money, then I think you, that helps you understand where your, where your boundaries lie for this group. Doesn't mean that there isn't other issues out there and then, but what venue is that then gonna be in, I don't know. That'd be a question for, for homeworks department and finding out about where do they find help, so. Anyway, that's I, is, is what I'm hearing kind of collectively from the group so far, so.
Well, I, I think that they may want to tell me about the money, but they're gonna have to sell it to somebody generally. So there's gotta be some more meeting there, I would suggest that if you have questions. Email them to me, so at the next meeting I have a. A list of what your concerns are for on stormwater besides how to raise the money. And we could go there, cause we will definitely have, uh, the engineers and the people from the. Water Department Utilities will be there. And they may be able to address that and see, so. I'm more than happy to go there and take the heat and say, this is what we want. Right, and questions we wanna answer. To before we, you know, we feel it's important to do this, so we can determine what we're gonna do with the light. Not just how to raise the money.
Well, how, how do you think they would respond to, say, you know, Jake's two, two question of, of. What's the, what's the cost benefit analysis of the, of the various projects? Um, and where's this design criteria, drainage, drainage criteria manual? You know, is that, is that just sort of like a, a stop in, in the process to say. Uh, we, we don't think that we, we really know what our priorities are or, or how to cost out. The, the program, we don't have these standards set, you know?
I mean, I think, and it's my opinion, I guess, but. As an engineer, we, as, as city or a community haven't decided through the city council that. Hey, this is what underage is gonna do in town and. How are we creating these master plans, you know, we don't know what the city council has, has accepted as creation. And not that they would. I, I don't know if many of them are technically fit into it, but they would have recommendations from the engineering department to say, this is what we want to happen, and, and we should have. But without having plans, it's hard to say that these projects are.
Like, that's what.
Would those things be based on, on, you know, areas that are problematic where there's a lot of flood?
No, it's, it's, it's the entire, if, if you would just, if, if the document that would, that would define how you design stuff. Basically, and what the, like if you, if we're only gonna allow like four inches of rainfall or running. Stormwater running in the street, four inches of that, where's the rest of it? You know, so we have maximum like depths, we have certain drainage, uh, detention requirements, we have. You know, certainly like, let's say, maybe pipe sizes, maybe types, I mean, it's, it's all encompassing for what defines. How our stormwater works and how it's gonna stop. You know, and I don't know how we can evaluate to say something that's not functioning right, that we don't know how it should be functioning in the first place. You know, by. City Council coming along saying, this is what we are adopting.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if you got the email I forwarded from Ocean Andrew, did you guys get that?
No.
Ocean Andrew's state representative and he said there are means to. State money that can be used for one-time purchase, the state is not interested in funding. You know, infrastructure, but they would probably be interested, we probably could get state money for vacuum trucks for, uh. You know, for CCTV camera systems and, uh, sweepers. That's the kind of thing you can go to the legislature and get, and that would, how much, what's the cost benefit of that? They looked at just getting the equipment that they want and if they looked at alternatives to getting that equipment. I think if you got all four of our representatives that are in the state legislature together sometime in the next two weeks. And say, hey, send us some money for, you know, so we could buy some more trucks and buy a back, and buy another back truck and. Get another CCTV system.
So, so one of the expectations of what this system would consist of at a very base level would be that. Storm drains, systems clear debris and in the condition to move.
More water.
Whatever water can be moved by the, by the.
By the system, yeah.
And then out we add, you know, maintain and operate detention ponds, I don't know, is it, you know, are, are the detention ponds. Do they appear to be adequate in volume and are they operated and maintained properly and are they doing the job of delaying?
Well, I think a lot of that is defined in a lot of those master plans, but again, how do we know that it's right? You know, we, we don't have a basis of what's right. For what's, you know, what the community has adopted, it's me, this is what we're, this is what we expect of our stormwater system. You know, cause like, it's different, but it's like an example.
I mean, what you expect is that is that you're not gonna have floods.
But that's.
And, and, and so there's an education component of saying, you know, we're gonna have five hundred year floods and, and things are gonna be. Really nasty in some areas and, and maybe spring creek overflows and floods and, and, uh. Levani Park can't, can't take all the stormwater and it floods in that area. I mean, and, and, and they talked about education in the notes from the meetings, that's been important, and that sort of goes to your question of. You know, how do you convince people that they're getting something and are willing to spend twenty dollars a month to, and, and know that there's something going on?
Right, and then we get a bigger storm and when they're flooded again, if they're like, what are these things we last month or not?
Well, and, and, and then one thing is that, is, I think acknowledging that, that you're not gonna solve all your problems, you know, it's, it's gonna happen. That a component, the, you know, what, what are the emergency services in, in, in the event of a, of a major, a major flooding event? You know, that, that, okay, we've done the best we can. Water's moving, but it's backing up in the system because Spring Creek is flooded or Larranay is flooded. But, but, you know, we, we still got, we got canoes or, you know, we're drawing, we're pulling people out, you know, that there, that there is an emergency response. In place to, to, to take care of, of when stuff really goes, goes up. Which, which, you know, climate change or what's going on, we have frequency and, and, and density of storms. You know, and it seems to be very, very real, uh, in, in today's, uh.
Well, honestly, you know, I hear that every ten years. One of those things that happens, so.
Yeah, that's right.
As, as long as you're, we could move it to fifteen years apart, I think the public would be a lot happier. We're in the stormwater system, we are gonna get floods.
Yeah.
It's just the things are beast, there are low spots that will fill up. If you guys have questions, email them to me, I will make up a list and I will make sure I ask every single one of them. At the next meeting is the planning commission representative. But, you know, I, I really think they need to start exploring alternative. Means of, you know, maybe go to the legislature, pat and hand, Larranay's not that well liked by the rest of the state, but. I think if they were to go with a united threat from our elected representatives, we might be able to squeeze a. Brush truck up or a back truck. You know, you never know, you might, you, you don't ask, you don't get, so. That's something I think, that's about my favorite.
So, so could the focus, would the focus group kind of devolve into just dealing with, okay, what's, what's the funding for? Just the general need? And then with, with a set of recommendations that come out of a more sort of in the weeds technical discussion of. What the stormwater system is, where's inadequacies are, what would be done, but they end up with a, with a, a laundry list for the en, engineering department to say, hey, guys. You need to do these things.
Yeah, well, and, and from our understanding, that is the process as well, but, but, I mean, the history of, like I said, our. Our initial draft drainage design report was eleven years ago, I don't have confidence that we're gonna have.
So we don't have Vance Howard to.
To fully hire a consultant, so I don't know what the holdup is, but that's why I'm saying, I'm not overly confident that we need the money yet, we need it, we need something to tell us. What we're able to do before we get the money to use up. You know. We need to throw in money and something isn't solving the problem if we don't have a problem. I mean, we have a couple drainage plants that I think fight problems, but, you know, as a community, we haven't agreed that those are problems, those are left. And so it's.
How you get community to wholesale council, right?
And then that's community.
So, so, so Derek, is, is that a legitimate sort of process that, that the city council would, would adopt a, a. A master plan, so to speak, for, for drainage that then is the community's desire, is that? Is that a, a, a doable thing, uh, in?
I mean, they could, yeah. I mean, it would be no different than you could see, right, I mean, that's, that's more than, than what we're gonna find out of a drainage. Then, but, but not. No, uh, no, almost none of our standards are adopted by council. Um, building code's not adopted by council. Building code is through, through the development code, but all, all your engineering standards, public work standards are. Adopted just are, they're, they're standard usually done and approved by staff. So. Now, plans, I mean, all sorts of plans, we have to go back and look at all the plans that engineering has, but, you know, those are always presented. So they're always hired by consultants, you get through council funding and, uh, even through, you know, public processes, development processes and things, so. Right, that would be pretty standard, I mean. Your capital improvement plan, same thing, you know, you're looking at a, up an improvement plan, let's. Run through different staff and then eventually this, you know, followed each year based upon budgets that council adopts and so I mean. There's quite a lot of that, but some communities do, some communities. Take a lot of different routes and they may decide for like a, a master plan for stormwater and, and do a very similar planning like process. Um, what's tough though is when you start getting into technical documents, it's not. A, it's not just a process of what people feel they think's appropriate. Because eventually you have to get down to the numbers of what's actually appropriate based upon whatever the data says. Uh, a lot of the planning processes that you all see, you may hear from the public, there's a lot of, there's, it's, it's a little more touchy feely, you know, this, this is. And so, um, and that's why it goes through boards like yourselves to. Add some of that because some of them, some of those ideas, they're, they're maybe not fully backed by just tons of empirical data that we can. Get into the numbers, so, um, you know, I, I, I guess what I would say is that it's a possibility that. The community wanted to go that direction, they can adopt plans, I mean, they can, I can go through a more formal process, I guess.
I, I guess this is the bottom, and how is. That like the public work standards and all of the sort of engineering standards, how are those adopted by? Sort of like enforcement through the state?
The, the city, so in city code, the authority is given to those, to that staff and to the city manager to, and. To enforce rules, protect the community from general health, safety and welfare, and so it's very general. And it's, that's how it's done.
So, in, in this case, it's basically that city engineers direction, correct, and adopt or, right?
Okay, so my, all whatever rules or, yeah, whatever, you know, standards that are decided for whether it's stormwater or. Street construction standard or, yeah, whatever, whatever those standards might be.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I will double down on this. But, uh, cause I can say.
So.
Straight to the point.
So with the consultants, this, spearheading this stormwater thing. You, you think that, that part of, of the deliverable to the, to the city is, is one of that kind of touchy feely. Um, aspects of this discussion and feedback to say, what concerns, issues, challenges do you encounter in your brains? Which is sort of a community thing, you know, what, what would you like to see not happen, um, in the way of water inundation? And the second one, what are the expectations of the community for city management for drainage system? Again, that's, that's a community sort of thing, so, so I guess my question would be. Is this consultant, when they're finding a report, they have sort of a, 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 an, a lead-in part to their, to their deliverable and says, this is. This is the problems in the system, this is what the community wants, this is the, the, you know, to, what, what it will take to get, make everybody or try to keep people safe and. Protect property and, and, and make them sort of feel like something good is happening with stormwater. And then, and then go into the, the, the technical stuff of, of how to, how to do stormwater and then the funding, you know, that it'll be as big, they don't ask it often.
Yeah, I think that's what the school system is putting together here. In addition to fighting back. We're spending as much, but what I'm saying is I think we, we need to push harder. Side break and stuff before we push this stuff like repetitive car for police.
Right.
My, so.
But, but it is comforting to, to me to, to know that if this consultant is tasked with. This comprehensive community technical funding, you know, how to make, and, and we're just part of this group to. You know, bring some of this community stuff into play or via, there are two questions on this discussion and feedback. And, and, you know, they talk about it and they make notes and then it's in, it's somewhere in their introduction and they've had private interviews and stuff and then, and then. And then the comments about we need to have a more technical presentation of what the problems are and, and why it. Uh, how it can be implemented and then, so, yeah, the card is. A little bit before the horse, but, but maybe you just get the cart start, started to get loaded up with ideas. Of, of how funding might happen, you don't know how much you need, but you know you're gonna need to help a lot.
Yeah, one hundred thirty-five million is a secret for us here.
Okay, all right.
From that, though. I think Tom's idea of just sending you the questions we have, because I recognize I'm. Uh, kind of a dangerous doctor, literally, and pretty uninformed, but I mean, I had some very. Simple questions like, okay. The, the, we're expected, the city is expected to come up. With a hundred thirty-five million dollars over what period of time, that's question one. Second question, uh, at the meeting, uh, there was at least one type of contractor there who was. Very keen to push the point that contractors would like to do this work because this is a big sum of money and it's like construction of the university. And did it, does the stormwater, uh, advisory group have a recommendation that it should be done mainly by the city? Mainly by private contractors or a mix of both, or we can put off that position, but I would be very interested in knowing. Could the city do it, or is, are we better off having contractors do it, or what that balance should be, I think that's. There's so much money at play and it's gonna be extracted from folks. And we need to be sure that whoever's delivering it, whether it's a city private partnership, uh, is the right mix. That's another question.
All right, Tom, well.
Put it in an email, say, Teresa, and I will compile all these and bring them to the next meeting. And I would probably mail, I will probably email the consultant with a list of questions first that could be answered in the next meeting. I don't know if that's good. But I don't, I don't want to go to a meeting and say, here's a list of questions, I'm gonna have to have them and they don't know how to answer. Rather, we get all this together in one document, send it to them and see what their response is.
Yeah, sure, I think I think what I would recommend is if you're gonna send them all to Tom or if you send them to us or something, back and forth on the top, whatever's easiest for you all. Um, if you put them all together, sending them to the consultant or staff before the meeting is always highly beneficial. It helps us, at least at least the staff and the consultant to maybe find answers for them to answer at the meeting so that they don't just say, well, we'll get back to you our next meeting. So.
Yeah, now, see too much down the road.
Yeah, and 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 yeah, might as well, you have the questions, you put them together, let's send them over to them. And I can help coordinate that if need to. I mean, if you have an consultancy, you know, that's fine, we can send it to our public works staff and they'll pass it along with the consultant, so.
That's great. There's a large amount of money that the public is going to assist, there'd be a lot of transparency now. So, uh. So far, I don't see, I know they gave us a list of their priority projects and what their top five are gonna cost and all that, but that. Top five comes to nowhere near a hundred thirty five million dollars. So, you know. Where where's the transparency, where do you do the rest of it?
So questions to you by the end of the month, by the end of January?
Yeah, that'd be great, and then I forward them on it, gives them two weeks to answer. And come up with solutions. I just don't want to go and spring on a bunch of questions on in the middle of the week.
Right.
And I would, I would suggest let Tom, I can send him maybe five or six questions, but let Tom just edit them down. So you don't go before the group, let's take the questions, because that's just gonna bother the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
Just try and ask the questions.
And. The big man over there don't mind, I might consult with him on it, so.
Okay. All right, well, we're good, I think that is.
I think that's the best way to proceed this time, yeah.
Freedom of role. Any any other questions before we shut this down?
I have a question, and this is in relation to West Laramie. So there's a water quality problem in Laramie River, so it's regarded as a a impure water. And a lot of that sediment, and maybe in Ramo, but I assume a lot of that sediment is coming from West Laramie because they have dirt roads, is that correct? Or nobody knows.
I don't have an answer. I I don't think it's coming from upstream.
Well, I think our agriculture and and upstream moving into the water.
If I had to make an educated guess, I would also agree with that.
Okay, okay.
But but the point you made at the meeting was that it it's more than just sediment, it's actual hydrocarbons and grease and, you know, things that are coming off.
That that travels east with the sediment.
Right, so it's 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 dissolved in water or.
But surprise me was when I asked the question, um. What's in the wastewater when it gets into the Laramie River? The answer was, it was a lot of sediment, but the other kind of stuff that's there, I don't know. And then they wrote it down, but it's quite clear from reading the three reports from East Laramie, West Laramie and South Laramie, that what's. Uh, there is an emphasis in those reports that is not being picked up by the wastewater group. That we're contributing to pollution and there should be some component here on monitoring. What the hell is going into the Laramie River? And is it getting worse, is it getting better? I, if I understand it correctly, there is monitoring upper and downward of that, right? Looking at sediments, there's currently a monitoring scheme, is that correct? Any of them? The Laramie River.
Uh, I don't believe it, but I don't know.
I I would say I think there's a limited effort to test. The the river somewhere upstream of Laramie. And then there is, because the wastewater treatment plant operates under the WITD, so they they test that, but not at the river, just the sort of the F comes out of this one tree.
So so DQ isn't looking at what we're doing as a city, it's the Laramie River?
I don't believe so, because we're, we don't, we don't fall under under any misport category for stormwater, so we don't.
But we probably will sometime in the future.
We may, but right now, I don't believe in things that's important.
I would think that if you wanted to know what Laramie was contributing to the to the Laramie River, we look at spring. I mean, a a lot, a lot of the storm drain, at least at the south end of town, you know, just drains directly into.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, but like, like I was saying, I think, I believe that either the gate, uh, you know, inches of sound and upstream organs in the river. And then as it backs or in town, and then as it backs, it's in compared to the source, you would very clearly see what what the whole of that, like a whole.
And I guess I would like that to be one of the recommendations coming out of the stormwater group.
And yeah, in the range of giving the water quality impacts, not just getting water, you know, off the street and someplace else. All right, cool, all right, we're good. Um, any other questions from our mission group? Public comment on on this, uh, work session topic?
Hey, I'm Sarah Morin, and like so love you, I went to this stormwater meeting last month, mostly. With a water quality interest because I'm a president of Albany County Clean Water Advocates, but also I'm a former director of the downtown clinic. Which has been flooded completely three times in the last fifteen years and I was in on two of those cleanups and it wasn't fun. So I have a real strong interest in how this whole thing works, although I'm coming to it as kind of a newbie. Um, I'd like to say that Commissioner Schneider's comments about getting the criteria in place and, uh, more data on how you meet those criteria. Because I was, one of the things that struck me at the meeting was, um, the consultant has worked really hard to try to figure out how much the city is spending now on stormwater. But it's apparently not, as I understood it, apparently not a line item in the budget separated from other public works things. And so trying to get a handle on that, which would be helpful in terms of understanding the whole financial picture. Um, but I'd also like to say that the Commissioner Madam Moore is pointing out from a planning perspective. Uh, what's the, what goes into the study and the point about integrating stormwater management. Techniques or what I guess I'd say modern stormwater, stormwater management techniques of the green mediums and that kind of thing would be right up the planning conditions alley. And also, although I appreciate his point about these things cost money for, when you're talking about affordable housing and so on. We wouldn't be here having this discussion if. Stormwater management had been integrated into past development. And, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't see the future and make all these things happen perfectly every time. But certainly now that we're more aware of the issue, we can make more of an effort to prevent those costs from falling on future taxpayers. As opposed to developers. And if there's an issue with providing affordable housing, to look at other funding mechanisms for that rather than saying, we're gonna shortchange infrastructure because it costs money. Uh, it just seems to me that that's taking money from one pocket and, you know, putting it in another. Um, the other point too was about the role of the university. And I know that city and university relations are not, you know, super thudgy right now. Um, but that's something that needs to be pursued, I think, if you, that, um, I've talked to people who are. Uh, adjacent to the recent, the university's recent developments and they've seen significant amount of more stormwater in that neighborhood. So I don't think the, if they have a policy of no upside impact, it isn't working. And so, and they're, but another potential source of funds, even though ultimately this all comes from, a lot of it comes from the state. So that's just maybe something that could use some general attention as we proceed, proceed with this, but thank you. I think it's really great that the agents came with that, a lot of detail.
Thank you, it's more. And and hey, yeah, I was really happy that guy, that that focus group mentioning, well, what's the role of UW increasing stormwater discharge? And this is a Chris Dixon's comment about, you know, other things, um, it's sort of the elephant in the room, for sure. Okay. Um, oh, so is there a bunch of, uh, in the work session?
So moved.
Say it.
Say it.
Okay, all the major, um. In the work session, say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, on to the next, uh, agenda item, which is another work session of Westside Visioning.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Moody, members of the commission, I'm pleased to introduce two of the interns that are gonna be helping us with this, um, study. Uh, that we're undertaking, we applied as a city planning department to the University of Colorado Denver. For, um, a couple of interns to help us with some planning initiatives that we frankly don't have the staff to pursue really to the degree that we'd like to. But, um, we've used, uh, um. CU Denver before, um, in the past, and other interns as well from UW and otherwise. And I just want to introduce those two to you this evening, as well as give you a little overview of the project that we're pursuing here. So the essence of the project lies in understanding, um, and preserving rich community, uh, west side. And neighborhood deeply rooted in legacy of USP, uh, diverse immigrant, uh, communities. And, um, the challenge we've often faced from, uh, we run into, uh, development proposals over there. Um. It is maintaining the neighborhood's historical identity, but then giving it a voice as well. Because as you all know, um, uh, west side is extremely eclectic in its architecture. Uh, extremely diverse in its population, probably more so than the rest of, uh, Laramie other neighborhoods. Um. But really, it's our commitment to really understand that community better, to put something into right writing, to survey that community. Um, so that when development is proposed, that we have a, um. A document really that that these interns are gonna help us with to define the voice, the neighborhood character, if you will, and so forth. So a large part of this, and I'll let them speak, they have a presentation, follow my brief summary here, but a large part of this really is gonna be community engagement. And we really do throughout the presentation, while you all will be thinking about the best ways to engage, um, west side residents. Uh, there'll be opportunity at the end to discuss that, as well as provide, uh, your own contacts that we can include in the, um, database that we've been building. But without taking stealing too much thunder from our young interns, so we're so happy to have have the pleasure of meeting them personally when we get matured a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'd like to, if it's okay with you, Chairman, to turn it over to Aslan and Avery for a presentation.
Thank you, Aslan and Avery, welcome, thank you very much. You're you're muted, Avery.
My bad, thank you, guys, we really appreciate you having us this evening. Uh, we're excited to talk to you guys about our capstone project and how we think that it can be beneficial to not only the west side neighborhood, but also to Laramie as a whole. Uh, so to kind of get going here, we just, the whole point of the project is to create a document that. Sort of encapsulates the vision that the residents and stakeholders in the west side neighborhood have and what they want to see in their future. What what do the residents of west side want the west side to look like in the next five, ten, fifteen years? Uh, so to do that, we want to do that through a combination of engagement, of engagement strategies and goals. So to do that, we'll give you a little look at the, uh, study area. Uh, the pink, the highlighted pink portion will be the main area of focus here, that's the established residential area of the west side. Uh, but we have highlighted the west side as a whole, that includes all the other kinds of areas, the, uh, industrial parks, um, the the parks. The EPA brown field that's out there, as well as the BP property that is currently sitting vacant, how those could potential be potential opportunities. Or what the west side residents want to see those become, uh, and also, you know, just giving you an idea of what's around and how we can, you know, think of it spatially. Uh, so before we get too deep into the project, we want to tell you a little bit about ourselves, you know, because we are working in the community. And I think that we think that the best way to do that is, you know, to kind of get to know one another. So I'm Avery, I'm in my final semester of my master's degree here, uh, up at CU Denver in the MUR program. Uh, some professional, uh, passion passions of mine are community engagement, which I I know I speak for Aslan and myself, and we say that we're really excited. About how much intensive engagement that this project calls for. Um, another passion of mine is development assistance, that's things like looking at city code and zoning regulation, how that can be used to benefit communities. Uh, and then lastly, public space, which is something that, uh, every community needs a little bit of. Uh, but I'll, I'll, without further ado, I'll let Aslan introduce herself.
Hi, everyone, um, let me know if you can't hear me. Like I already said, my name's Aslan Drosky, I'm also in my last year, um, of the Urban and Regional Planning Program. Um, before I joined the program, I was actually a historic preservation planner, um, down in Savannah, Georgia. So I have a bit of experience doing that and also land use planning. Um, and that kind of led me to being passionate about community engagement alongside Avery, as well as, um. How we can be great facilitators as planners and figuring out what communities want. Um, so, yeah, very excited about this project. Um, and then just some free time interests, I love, um, reading and going on long distance walks, which is just, I go walk for two hours. Um, and then I love board games as well, and you'll hear from me in a few more seconds after Avery finishes his piece.
And to, uh, give you an idea of my professional background, uh, I I'm from Missouri, and when I was there, I worked for CAG, a council of governments. Uh, in the southwest part of Missouri there, I helped develop comprehensive plans, uh, transportation strategies, you know, all all that kind of stuff on a, on a regional level. So I'm kind of excited to kind of narrow that view down to the neighborhood level. Uh, so our project has three main goals here, the first is the sort of data gathering portion of this, and that's how we'll start sort of, uh, create more of a focus for our project. And that's conducting what we're calling a neighborhood inventory. We're gonna be collecting things, the various home types, uh, the ages of those homes, how long they've been there, how long they've been established. The lot sizes, since, you know, uh, Philip had mentioned, you know, it's an eclectic community and there's a whole lot going on there, we just kind of want to know. Uh, what's going on with the, you know, what people like, what people don't like. And also street classifications, just to give us an idea of, you know, how busy things are getting around there. Uh, the real meat and potatoes of this project, though, as we have mentioned, is the engagement. We really want to engage with the community on on the main topics of what they want their future housing to look like, how they want to be further connected, uh, to. To the rest of Laramie, you know, is the footbridge enough, you know, or how can we, um, assist them in that in that way? And also maintaining that eclectic neighborhood character that we, uh, we had, uh, Philip has also mentioned that we were able to do a site visit. And we really want to keep the neighborhood, the neighborhood, we don't want to come in with a bunch of cookie cutter homes or anything like that, or propose something of that nature. We really want to hear from what the community thinks and what they want. Uh, and the last is to create that document that will illustrate, um, everything that we learned from the residents and the stakeholders in the community and how that can further guide future developments. Uh, and also what kind of other amenities that we can bring to that neighborhood. Uh, we have our own goals, but we want our, uh, project to also align with city goals, uh, specifically the ones where they prioritize planning for public amenities. Implementing strategies to further, uh, disparate information to the community. Uh, and also develop awareness around community aware, uh, community events and, you know, alignment with those council goals. Uh, the real crux of this is to not only benefit the west side neighborhood, but to sort of perhaps create a template that could be used for other parts of Laramie as well. Uh, so to do that, we've laid out, we created this matrix that lays out not only who we want to get in contact with, but the five ways that we think that we can get in contact with them. Uh, the four main groups that we're looking to really communicate with here are the local residents of the west side, uh, identified stakeholders that the planning department of Laramie. Has been kind enough to put together for us, uh, any local business owners and any under underrepresented groups, and we're working. has been kind enough to put together for us, any local business owners and any under, underrepresented groups, and we're working with the Lincoln Community Center to identify those as we speak. So then, I won't get too far into the types of engagement, Aslan will do that, but you know, we have five main ones. That's a the idea of a new community hotline, so people can voice their opinions, interviews with these folks, online outreach, social media, visioning sessions, which is more your traditional stuff, and then finally, we want to do these pop-up events, but Aslan will get into those details.
Yeah, thanks, Avery. So yeah, first with the community hotline, this would essentially be a phone number, which would be forwarded to the two of us, and this is a way for us to get direct community input. And this is sort of a new tactic we're trying to pilot, so we'll see how it works out. But the people that we're kind of trying to reach with this are local residents and business owners, and specifically, I think it'll hit potentially some groups that may not be able to attend a traditional meeting, to give people kind of the flexibility to just pick up the phone and give us a call. So the next one we're going to be trying out is interviews and meetings. So interviews are going to be one-on-one or short, sort of smaller group settings with the stakeholders that we are putting together the list for right now. So this is people like community leaders, businesses, others. And additionally, meetings like this one, which will help us to identify additional stakeholders, and also to spread kind of the message of what we're trying to do with this project. Thirdly, we're going to do a lot of online outreach. So we do have a website that will be up and running pretty soon, and it will mainly be a homepage to provide updates on events and the different ways to give input. And this will allow us to give this to folks so that they can stay on top of events that are coming up. And this will be highly publicized through many methods, but also including, we plan to send out a mailer to every one of the residents so that they have a way to keep in contact with us. And then the last two of these are kind of the big ones in terms of in-person engagement pieces. So the first is a visioning session, and these are things where we would invite community members together for an event that we try to make kind of fun with music and food, and there would also be activities to encourage residents to participate with us and share their thoughts about what they want to see for the future of their neighborhood in ways that we can record both auditory or otherwise. We are in talks with the Lincoln Community Center to potentially host it there, but that is not finalized, so we're looking around for other places, but intending to keep it at a very local, walkable spot for people to be able to get to. And then lastly, we have pop-up events. So this is a kind of event where we might set up a table or a booth with very quick ways for folks to interact with us and for us to gain feedback. So we might do this at a lunch spot or at a community center event, such as if people are coming for some kind of service. And this also is a way for us to get at folks that might not be able to come to a more formalized meeting. And so in that place, we'll either be able to get feedback, or if they don't have the time, we can give them the materials for them to follow up with us later. So just a quick timeline for the project. As Avery and I both mentioned, this is our final semester, and this is kind of our final semester project. So we have from now until May 11th, when we wrap up and graduate to do this project. So the month of January, we're looking at developing that engagement plan more detailed and getting that list of stakeholders created, as well as conducting that inventory and getting the online components of engagement up and running. February is when we're really looking to host those first in-person engagement sessions, such as the visioning and pop-ups, and then also starting to have, set up those interviews with stakeholders. March, we are looking to kind of get some feedback on how those first engagement events went and continue doing all of the engagement strategies that we've set up so far, while beginning to work on that final document, which we intend to have done probably by the la, second to last week of April, just so that we can kind of have a nice celebration, hopefully at the Lincoln Community Center for their annual Cinco de Mayo event. And it's kind of what we're planning to do to celebrate the ending of the project. So yeah, as Philip mentioned earlier, we do just now have time for discussion. Thank you all for listening to our presentation. I think, basically, I think we could just jump in with whatever y'all want to respond to this, but I do want to say that we are really looking for information on, you know, what you think we should learn about the West Side, if there's any stakeholders you suggest that we should speak with, and if throughout this presentation, there was any strategies or other considerations that we overlooked that you think we should be aware of. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, yeah, leave those, if you could leave those questions up for us to, to look at.
Okay. Just as far as outreach goes, is, is there any possibility of like a signage, you know, how we put it, something with a sign like, I don't know what it would say, but with a text number of saying, hey, sign up for, for text notifications of events in the area or something, because I know in my own experience, things happen and I'm like, oh, I don't even, didn't even know they were happening. And how about direct mailers to the addresses, maybe the, like, the address of that phone, that owner's addresses are different. Just like, additional thoughts?
All right, just, didn't I, they possibly put posters up that butcher block, Gary McCam's place, the used car dealer, and a few of the other businesses, the, the, along the West Laramie Five Store, and see if you could put some posters up there, like, people know they, they want to participate in this plan.
Now, this is the West Side versus West Laramie.
Yeah, this is from Traxor.
From, from, let's say between I-80 and, and the tracks.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not west of, of the freeway.
Mr. Chair, I mean, yeah, the study area is that pink area, because the residential area is considered West Side.
You got Spiegelburg and Greta and David. He's the biggest guy there. I don't see people there, and I think they'd be interested, Chair. I'll let them know.
And Mr. Chair, to the points that have been made, yeah, we, we do have budget for direct mailings, which we plan to utilize. And we, we're working with the interns on creating some, some type of posters, flyers to send out, like, in direct mailings, put them up in businesses. You know, that are in West Side. But I think to the point of contacts that you have, I think the best way to to gather those is we can send a follow-up to the commission after this meeting, just for that as the subject line, it's, it's additional hot nights for West Side. And we can continue to build that list that we have, because we're going to do one-on-one interviews with as many of them as time allows for. I think the interns, they said they have, what, 80 hours a week to do? No, they have 12 hours a day. Well, we try to fill all time up, so we'll definitely then as well as invite them to the events that we have.
What, what are some of the specific things that you would be saying to the to the residents of, as though, where this information is going to go, what, what that's sort of deliverable to them in five or 10 years would be such that sort of as, as a motivation for getting their, their input at this point in time?
I can go ahead and start, Mr. Chair, but I think it's a proactive measure, the best as we can see, because we have had development proposals over there, most recently a rezoning that was not approved because of because of public input received. Whether that really encompasses the full nature and, and vision of that community is to be determined, because there are very vocal folks over there that show up for everything as we always see in planning. But this is trying to get to the deeper level of, you know, whole canvassing of the neighborhoods, getting the underrepresented groups that perhaps don't have time to participate in normal planning events. I mean, don't get me wrong, we totally respect all public input that we receive. I think we make that really clear in, in the way we know to buy folks and try to get people to come to meetings, but to me, it's a proactive measure that we can work with the developers with in addition, you know, when, when we do receive development proposals. The first question we always get is is this a conditional use? What, what's the neighborhood going to say? And our token answer always is, well, we're not really, we can't really tell you that. We, we can give you some ideas of what we've heard, but really, we always advise people to do their own research. Not many people take this up on doing their own mailings and stuff like that to let the neighborhood that they're affecting know what's going on. But this study, we see is something to use to help them understand. And we have, I'm just giving you an example, based on our survey results for this and how many people we're able to talk to. You know, we've talked to X percentage of West Side, and they've said this about this type of multifamily housing, just as an example, but if the interns want to jump into, I like them.
I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you, thanks. Sorry. Hold on, did, did, did you want to address what Phil was saying?
I was just going to add that if, from the engagement events, it, it seems like a lot of it's going to be talking, but I think Avery and I are going to do our best to code the things that we hear from people and record it all. So like Philip said, at the end of it, we can have these sort of statements of what we heard and be able to give a real character to the West Side. And then we also are planning to do an appendix, which, so the document itself is kind of like the final product of this, will be hopefully quite short, so people will want to read it, probably 20 pages or less. And then we're planning to do an appendix as well, that where we can actually kind of list a lot of the different things that we heard and maybe what some of the responses from planning department are, et cetera. And I think that will give people a good base of what this engagement process got out of it.
Do you think that your compilation of, of dialogue and so forth, that, that is it? I'm supposed to come into any kind of, you know, conclusion of based on these interviews, the community seems to want A, B, C, and D. You're, you're not, are, are, is, is that sort of one of your end points, or is it just here's what people said, you as a reader, come to your own conclusion based on this, this outpouring of, of, of opinion and vision and so forth, but without, without saying, this is what needs to be done?
I, I can take this one, Aslan. Yeah, we, we, I, I think I can also speak for Aslan when I say this, we don't want this to be prescriptive. We want this to be sort of, like you said, kind of come to your own conclusion. I mean, we will work with the planning department to perhaps come up with some recommendations based on what we hear, but we want this to be a document where the people of the West Side can say, oh, my voice was heard and represented, and then if there were to be future developments, this would be a representation of what I would want to see.
Yeah, I agree on that. And I think it also depends on how conversations go. There might be a topic where there's insane consensus, and then there might be a topic where we have to kind of put in a couple more of the muddled pieces of it all. But I think the point is to maybe not obscure the things that people are saying, but just to try to make sure we, we still reflect if we're hearing a majority or not.
Oh, yeah, a question. And this is, first of all, I want to thank you guys for doing this. I think this is very valuable. You asked a question, what would you like to tell us about the West Side? I think I'm going to say it's true. When the Southern Range Road was going to be, was going to be kind of redirected with the lineup, with the road across the railway, it was going to bisect the West Side. And the folks on the West Side very appropriately said, no, we will not divide the community in that. And so it did impose some expense on the city, and then it ended up the road going around the West Side, but it's a pretty historic part of town, and it's, it's a very important part of the city. And I have a question for you, and that is, do you have enough money to do what we plan to do? You remember Philip is listening and don't understand the type of what? It's a serious question. Do you have enough money to?
You're muted.
Oh, well, I, I, we heard, we, Aslan and I have honestly no budget for this. We are just kind of commuting up there, trying to go where people are, listen to what they have to say and all that kind of stuff. But in terms of a budget for, you know, things like mailers and all that sort of thing, I believe that Derek and Philip would be able to speak more to a, an actual member.
I'm just shocked that two college interns have no money for this project. This is so disappointing. Now, like, planning commission, we, within our, within the planning budget, we do have money to spend on the project. This isn't, this isn't going to be, though, some really grand project, but we are going to do what we can to try to, one, aid our, aid the students in their project. We, we like doing these things, but also for the West Side, we think it's important enough to do this type of public outreach and coordination. And I mean, like I said, it's not going to be the the greatest thing. It's not a huge comprehensive plan update where we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of budget. But we, we have some funding, we're going to use it, we're going to do as much as we can to try to reach as many people, so. But it's not going to be a Chevy boat.
I don't know. I don't even know where it's going for that. Go forward, Dr.
I, we know it's not going to be reported at 250.
No, it, it's never going to be a good one.
This is going to be a good project. This is going to, this is one of those, these are, this is one of these fun projects that we get to do that, you know, it's not project oriented, we're, we're out there trying to just gain understanding, engage the public, learn, and hopefully from this few years down the road, we can take this information, and maybe it does take us down to a planning process where we go to our council and ask for a larger budget, can really do some sort of project, so. But that's really, this, this effort hasn't been done, and that's what we're really kind of kicking that off with.
It's a perfect area to do it, to state, community that self-identifies. You know, everybody I know down there identify themselves as being in that neighborhood. So I think this would be a perfect opportunity to get the sense of a neighborhood that's fairly stable and, you know, see what they think of the future.
I suspect the community will probably respond, and we very much saw, you know, not without a real serious agenda out there to, to be pushing on, which is, you know, talk to us, just want to hear what you have to say, get, get it in the record, and and maybe good things will spiral out. That's, that's great. Thank you. I think this is great idea.
Well, thank you all so much. We really appreciate those, those kind sentiments. And, you know, we're really hoping that this is something that will benefit the West Side and those that live there.
Well, again, thank you from the commission and the, and the, and staff that you're stepping up to the plate and your question.
No.
Well, with Chair, I'll be back.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add. And I just wanted to add that we will be presenting the city council as well at their work session in March. So by then, we'll definitely be deep into the surveying, the hearing responses we get during our regular staff updates, so. And again, we'll follow up with the planning commission with the email asking for contacts and anything additional for this. Derek, well, and just one thing, I mean, just looking at these questions, you know, this, you know, for, for the students, I mean, is, you know, is there anything, any of the other members of planning commission related to these questions? I think we talked a little bit about stakeholders, right? Maybe we'll mail in some info if you have people you know, and it's an easy way to do it, and we'll get it to them, but you know, you know, anything, you know, from the commission or what you want to tell them about the West Side? Can we get a copy of this PowerPoint? Ms. Hundy.
Thank you. Chair Hundy. City Council liaison to the planning mission vice mayor. I have a, a suggestion and just a, a comment. A suggestion and just a a comment. Um. The Albany County Historic Preservation Society and Board, um. We participated with them last year in conducting some focus groups about uh exploring the plus the. Um, historical relevance of the West Side. And submitting for um. Submitting to the National Registry for designation as a historic district. So there were several uh focus groups, uh councillor Gabriel and I attended those, and um. As we would come into the groups, people were very skeptical, and throughout the ninety minutes of the group. People became very uh supportive and enthusiastic. Uh, we later followed up with a walkabout where uh. Members of the community, the first Historic Preservation Board and Council walked around the town and things like that. They. Applied to a grant and received it with match funding from both the city and Albany County. And they are currently conducting a study. About. The nature of the houses, the dates, the structures, the descriptions of that neighborhood. And trying to identify structures that would qualify. And those structures that would not qualify. And as I listened to a very interesting presentation. From our interns, I thought that it seemed like there might be some duplicative kind of work. Going on, and that maybe if they contacted Karen Bard. From um the historic, she's the chair of the Historic Preservation Board. That they could coordinate, get some of their data that we're already supporting getting. Uh, so I just wanted to give you her email, and you all can take it down. That is K C. B A R D. At charter.net. And she's the chair of the board, and they are currently funded to be doing some of this work. So they may be able to combine and save you all some time. Um, a second question that is just a question, I'm curious about when you say that you'll be coding. Or will you be using qualitative methodology for your coding? And will you be doing what they call hand coding, uh, or would you be using a software program for that?
So I was planning to hand code it. Um, I've done that previously with survey results. Um, and so I think the plan, based on how we structure engagement events, would be to. Get a sentence or a set of words from folks when we're listening to them that we can later come back and give a coded word to. Um, just so that we can get some data, um, as well as some qualitative statements from people.
Okay, so then this would be more kind of an overview coding where you're pulling out. Frequent responses rather than in-depth qualitative analysis.
Yes, I think in the time that we have, I think that's probably likely.
I absolutely think that that's appropriate. I think that that that's it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I think that's really good for them to know. I think so. I have resource. Wonderful. Any other questions from commission, staff? Audience? Well, I think we'll wrap it up. And again, thank you um. Very much for Avery and Allison and Aslan. Um, best of luck. And we'll be hearing hearing from what what you're doing as we go along, so.
Thank you so much.
They have a number to, or can we just contact them? Okay, I'll just send interested people through you. Okay, Nick.
All right, is there a motion to end the work session? Second, second, second Jake, all of the neighbor. Uh, ending the work session on uh the West Side vision. Say aye.
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 And you can tell us a name. Okay, we're, and now is there a motion to um uh. To adjourn the planning machine?
Sure move.
Okay, second, second. All of the neighbor adjournment, and the cabinet committee say aye.
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 Okay, or opposed name, okay. Done for the jury.
Right.